Like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? This meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, and extended on June 16, 2021. For the public to join the meeting remotely through Zoom, please use the link posted on the agenda on the town's website. The governor's order, along with all supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body, is available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, all members of this meeting who will participate.
Tenants Association Annual Scholars Recognition Luncheon was held on April 13 at the Hogan Center at Holy Cross. Sydney Lyons, a senior at Auburn High School, was one of 68 students recognized from an accomplished and active stu- she is an accomplished and active student at Auburn High School. Sydney's participation at Auburn High School includes National Honor Society, Triumph Music Honor Society, Photography Club, Model UN, Math Team, International Club, Science Olympiad, Yearbook Committee, We the People, Students for Diversity, Academic Quiz Team, Student Council. She also, on top of that, has extracurricular activities: Concert Band, Marching Band, Softball, and Indoor Track. She's a National Honor Society President, International Club Vice President, Drum Major of the Marching Band, Co-Captain of the Model UN, Photography Club Vice President, Triumph Vice President, We the People Unit Captain, Varsity Softball Co-Captain. She also has an internship at the Auburn Historical Society. Sydney hopes to attend either UMass Amherst or Clark University in the fall and study physics. Mr. DeLong Champ and I attended the event, and we can attest that we were proud to accompany her and to hear of all the many other wonderful students across the county. But it was quite a very- it was an event that made us all very proud. So, just a few things on her list of accomplishments, but we're proud of Sydney, and she's a lovely, lovely young woman.
Wow, that's a lot.
Impressive.
It was amazing.
Just keeping a little bit busy, alright?
A little bit busy, so.
So, is Sydney here this evening?
Sydney is not. She could not make it here this evening, no.
Well, with her schedule, of course not.
Yes.
No, really, how could she squeeze us in?
That's awesome.
Alright, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 4:22.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote. Do we have students to represent this evening?
We do. I think Ally is with us.
Ally's there? Okay, great. Welcome, Ally. How are you?
Oh, good, how are you?
Great, thank you. Can't wait to hear what you have to say.
So, right now, school's a pretty exciting time. It's under two months left in the school year, and the seniors will be leaving even sooner than that, and their graduation's coming up. Another exciting event is Junior and Senior Prom. It's not this Saturday, but the Saturday after that, so May 7 at Union Station. And prom tickets have been being sold like this week and the past week, and everyone's very excited for that. But with that, there's also a lot of stress right now regarding the end of the school year, because the next two weeks are AP exams. So, all students enrolled in AP exam classes are like struggling to prepare, are working hard to prepare for the exams. And additionally, many juniors are signed up to take the SATs. So, Auburn is offering two dates, one on May 7 and one on June 4. So, that's another stressful thing that students are working hard to prepare for. And for underclassmen, they also have MCAS exams. So, the sophomores, I believe, have already taken their English MCAS, and then their math is coming up, and freshmen have Biology MCAS. And another thing is many juniors are also applying colleges and researching future opportunities post-high school. And tonight, there's an information session for students and their parents just at the high school about college and future planning. And that's about all I have. I don't know if Jasmine has anything to add.
Thank you. Jasmine, would you like to add to that?
Um, sure. I apologize. Um, I'm a little late. I accidentally clicked the wrong link. Um, so anyway, um, if I repeat something that you said, Ally, I apologize. Um, so, right now, um, there is honestly a lot of things happening for seniors just because the end of the year becomes really busy for senior students with things winding down, um, or just beginning, I suppose. So, I know that the official decision day for like all colleges in the US is May 1, which is Sunday. So, Monday is going to be decision day at school. So, um, seniors are encouraged to wear their gear. I happen to have mine on right now, um, for their plans for next year, whether that's the military or college or what have you. Um, so that's Monday. And then, I know that spring sports are in full swing right now, and they seem to be going really well. Luckily, we've had some decent weather, at least for my sport. Um, right before April break, we had the spring production of Newsies, which I went and saw. Um, and it was incredible. So, um, obviously, congratulations to those who participated. And Mrs. Bailey and Mr. Eisenhower for all that they do to, um, put into the production is always really appreciated, because it's always incredible. And I know that AP exams are starting to flow in, and they're coming up soon. So, right now, people are having finals and mock exams. Um, so those are going to be coming up soon. And I think MCAS might be over, but I'm not 100% sure, because I, I don't know, I don't, I don't hear about that anymore, since I don't have to take it.
Just be honest with us, Jasmine.
I, I think so, you know? I'll tell you how I really feel, you know? So, I think that's all I have to report on. I know April break was a great refresher, especially- I'm trying to ward off the senior slide right now. So, it was a good refresher, and now I feel like I have the energy to finish off the year strong. And I know senior privileges start on Friday, um, which includes like a few different things that obviously the seniors get to do, um, like leaving early at the end of the day on Fridays and things like that. So, I'm pretty excited, and that's all I can think of right now.
Well, that was a lot. You did a great job of keeping us informed without really stepping on Ally's toes too much, so.
Okay. Okay, good.
See from here.
Oh, um, I'm going to the University of Rhode Island.
Oh, awesome. That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, so, I'm excited. I just committed a few days ago, so I'm ready.
Now, you can still come back and visit us, because it's not too far away.
Oh, exactly. You know, I think I could still zoom into the meetings if you want, you know? Just open.
Please do. As long as it's not a home repair, um, session.
Okay. It was one faucet. It was one faucet.
One faucet that made quite the mess.
Yeah, I, oh, hey, not my money, right?
Wow. So.
I'm just kidding.
Thank you. I know. Thank you both for that report. That was great. Um, wish all of the seniors, um, our best and, and tell them to, um, finish the year off strong. And I hope that they make the right choices of the, the, the best colleges and where they're going to be the most happy, so.
Definitely, I will spread word.
Any questions or comments for student representatives?
Just thank you for all that you've done. Keeping us informed, it's appreciated.
Yeah. Very good job.
Okay, you can get back to your studies now. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Good night.
Have a good night.
They are great.
Yeah.
We've had some really good luck with, um, selecting student representatives.
We have.
Great personalities.
Yes, for sure.
And we now move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, tonight, um, I, I put in a, a little category that I hope we can continue at each meeting called Spotlight on Students, so that we can hear from some of our students and the wonderful things they're doing. This evening, I've, there are two students here from Auburn High School that are going to speak to us about Model United Nations, um, a program that's really taken off at Auburn High School. I won't read through all of this, because I suspect some of this is what they'll be speaking about. So, I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and they can go on up to the podium.
Uh, hi, everybody. I'm Patricia Haug.
Hello. I'm kind of echoing off of what Patricia said. Model UN has been really transformative for me, because I joined as a freshman like Patricia, and I was new to Auburn, um, in 6th grade, hadn't really gotten involved in too many clubs, and I really wanted to improve my public speaking. And so, I joined the club not really thinking too much of it, but then when I joined and really got involved, it really was just amazing. Um, Mr. Bonaccio and Ms. Perroll have done an amazing job of preparing us for our different meetings. Um, we've had, um, mock, like, mock Model UN meetings, where we run it like we were going to a meet, and just to practice, like, talking in front of other students and making sure that we talk with full authority and getting our points across. And, um, like Patricia said, it really has been amazing trying to get into the perspective of other countries and really getting in the minds of other countries instead of being confined to the little bubble of our US world. And so, it's done a lot for me in many ways, and I think the ones that I've talked about are really the most pivotal in my life. And so, yeah, it's been an amazing experience, and I hope to really continue it. And I'd recommend it to any and anyone. Yeah, thank you.
Excellent, very well said. Any questions or comments?
It just sounds fantastic. And you guys both command a presence when you're up there, which I think is really important, and it's a skill that you'll take all the way through any life, so. Keep this updated.
I just, I think it's great that, as you, as you said, you came in as a fairly quiet student as a freshman, and here you are, speaking in front of a whole room of people. And I'm sure there's even a lot more pressure when you're at the competition. So, it's, it's great to hear you speak so eloquently and so confidently. And I'm glad that it all worked out for you. Dr. Chamberlain, did you have something?
I did. Might you just share with us one or two of the topics that you, um, would have wrestled with during one of these, um, events?
Sure. Um, so my first conference is actually on global climate change and rising, specifically, rising like ocean levels and how that affects, specifically, I was based in European countries, because so many have such, um, low sea level ports and cities. Um, and I think I was Italy in my first conference, so it was very prevalent. Um, and kind of to step into that different perspective outside of what we hear and kind of learn about how this is like a day-to-day, like in-your-face thing. They can, they're watching this happening, um, was kind of a big one for me. Um, and there's been multiple different, like on refugee crises across the world. Um, and it's just been a very like form of thing. I don't know if you have any that you want to share?
Of course. Um, just to add on, a lot of the, um, kind of topics that we do, um, so we do have, like, topics that have to do with, like, around the world, but we also do have topics that have to do with sort of like movies and different things. So, I was, um, one of my favorite committees was one that was based on the Marvel comics. And I played, uh, Vision. And we were basically talking about the Sokovia Accords, which was essentially the government trying to take control of the Avengers, because they were causing so much, um, they were technically causing crime in the world, although they were trying to help, but it wasn't like legal. And so, um, it was very amazing just to kind of be in the play, like the mind of a character instead of like of an actual, um, like world, um, world leader. Um, and I did actually win an award for that. That was my first award, so that was amazing, so.
That's great, great.
Congratulations on that. That sounds like a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Now, sometimes I understand the groups travel for these competitions?
Yes, we're looking forward to next fall going to Brown College.
Okay. If you've been anywhere these past two years, or because of COVID, no, or?
It's been limited because of COVID. I mean, we go to other high schools. We go to, let's see, uh, CCONC, B.C. High, St. John's.
Concord Academy.
Concord, yeah, that was the other.
Okay.
Two really good colleges. But next year, we're looking for Brown University, which is going to be very good.
That's our big trip.
And about how many of, of them are you on the, in the group?
Um, I want to say like.
I think our full club is like 30 people.
Oh, okay.
Bye, bye, guys.
Bye, thank you.
Very nice. Okay, moving on.
Uh, so, as usual, which hopefully this category is going to go away soon, our COVID-19 summary. I did provide you with some data around the number of COVID positive cases we had leading up to, um, toward the April break. Um, this past Monday, as I think everyone's aware with my daily notices, we did have a bit of a spike, uh, which is not surprising after the break, people traveling. Um, and so, but what, what makes me happy is that as the week has gone on, we've seen slight decreases, so we hope that that continues to go that way. Um, and again, the nurses are working diligently. We do have a number of kids that are, you know, off and on wearing masks, staff the same thing. Um, but it's more business as usual, which is great, even in light of that, so. Uh, I don't know if anyone had any thoughts or questions about. It's the same, same, seems like right for about the same, same.
Same, same.
Okay, um, moving on. I had shared with the committee some time ago that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had completed a tiered focus monitoring review in the areas of special education and civil rights for the Auburn Public Schools. This is something that every district is on a cycle to go through, so it's not that we were selected for any reason, but everyone goes through these. At the time I wrote this, um, I didn't have the complete report, um, but we did since, um, receive the final report. So, that is in your packet. Initially, I had just given you the three areas of improvement, so the, what's in here is a little bit incorrect. Um, so the three areas that we did receive feedback on include our bullying prevention and intervention plan. That plan had not been updated since 2014. The updates that need to happen are not, um, extreme. A few areas around making sure that we're acknowledging special populations that may be more prevalent to bullying, um, and a revision of the forms a bit. So, that was one area. The next one, again, is a revision really to a letter for students who are over the age of 16 and are leaving school without a high school diploma, certificate of attainment, or certificate of completion. Um, the letter we were using wasn't the correct one. It had to have a couple of very specific dates in it. We've revised that, and we're going to put some things in place to make sure that we're more closely monitoring the distribution of those letters. And we also were asked to do an update to the physical restraint policy. As you might expect, um, there's a much greater emphasis, as there should be, on de-escalation strategies and other ways to mitigate situations where a restraint could potentially result. Uh, and so, all of that is already in the works. Um, you know, to me, I think these are minor tweaks. They're just minor changes to some things already in place. Um, the one thing that I think was really good that came out of it, they were very, uh, pleased with the PowerPoint that we provide to staff at the beginning of the year that covers a wide range of things. Bullying, restraint, um, uh, the six sections, right? So, as a new employee, you know, who do you get paperclips from and all of those kind of things? Really, you know, to really dig into some of the very important things that new staff needs to, need to know related to safety and all of that, um, but also some things that will just help to make people feel more welcome as they join our team. Um, and we feel like this is something we can give to people right off the bat. So, I'm very excited about it. I'm very appreciative of the help that the folks in the, in the district gave to this. So, while, um, you know, sometimes we get a little fidgety with some of the things that Desi makes us do. Sometimes good things come out of it that can help make us a little bit better. So, I have no complaints about that. So, like, I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of that.
Through the chair, I, I would hope that having a handbook would also make it easier to answer questions when parents say, well, why did you do X, Y, Z? Well, take a look at our handbook. This is what our, you know, yes, we're, we're well-versed in restraint training and things like that. So, hopefully, that will put some parents' minds at ease as well.
Any other comments or questions?
No, it's just, it sounds like a good thing to do, have one hand.
Yeah, especially all the HR information, looks like.
Yes.
Included, so.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
The next item is just a performance summary. In light of the shift from acting superintendent to interim superintendent, I thought it was a good time to just kind of, actually for myself, to kind of reflect on some of the things that I've done and that have been worked on in the district with the help of lots of people. Um, and so, I looked at the rubric that's used to, um, evaluate superintendents. You know, I'm in a bit of a interesting situation with, um, as an assistant superintendent, now not having a superintendent to evaluate. I think it's important to be open about practice, right? So, I took that, um, rubric, and I'm only going to highlight a few of the things. I'm certainly not going to go through all of this, and this is also not a comprehensive look at everything. It's really more of what were the highlights and the things that I feel like I was able to kind of keep moving forward in light of a quite unexpected turn of events. Uh, and so, the first standard that they look at is obviously instructional leadership. And I think around this, I did a lot of work around accelerated learning that has, you know, happened over the, the last little bit of time, when we looked at the learning loss that students experienced during COVID-19. And beyond that, the work around universal design for learning, the facilitation of coaches within the district, the fact that as a district, we are receiving training that's going from pre-K through grade 12 for all of our staff, uh, so that we're really, as I said before, really be outplaced. And so, these programs have become very important to us and are a primary focus of my work. Um, I also established a district-wide mental health team, so that the guidance councils and the staff that are in the buildings are in every, uh, every day, are again, rowing in the same direction and looking to one another for support. We've done a lot around hiring. And again, I know the staff handbook in here, which I think is going to be a great resource for us. Um, and in the area of law, ethics, and policies, obviously, following through with this tiered focus monitoring, um, program. You know, not only did we have to go through the review, but I'll now ensure that we comply with all of this within the dates that are required. Um, I have regular meetings with the AEA leadership. I met with them yesterday. We have a wonderful relationship, very open and collaborative.
Yep, she's right there.
Yeah, I was gonna, oh, yeah. Where is she? She's there.
And obviously, helping with compliance and implementation of disciplinary action when necessary, and grant management has been another big role. Family and community engagement. What I focused on over the last several months is really working with principals around the philosophy of collaboration and customer service, right? So, we are here to work with families. We are here to support families. We are here to make sure that our kids get what they need. And so, I liken it to customer service, right? So, while we may not always be able to provide exactly what the family wants, what we have to be prepared to do is to provide what the child needs. And we have to work very clearly and diligently on that. So, I've worked, I think, through some of my communications via one call, trying to model the approach we can take with families that we can be positive, even sometimes when we have to talk about hard things, you know? And, and we've had to talk a lot about, about a lot of hard things. Um, and, and that way, too, when I see that they've done that and provided exceptional customer service, as we sometimes call it, I provide them with that positive feedback, right? Because it's that loop, right? You make that, you make that effort, you want some feedback on that. So, I'm very proud of the work we've done around that. And again, in professional culture, same thing is that collaboration. The collaboration between the principals, where we talk about problems of practice at our principal meetings. You know, what's going on? What would you like to share? We keep our confidentiality as needed, but we have to look to one another for support and for ideas so that we can all continue to improve. Um, that's the same here in Central Office, where we're establishing, thankfully to my friend back here, Mandy Williams. Um, we want this to be a place where when people come, they get a smile, they get, they feel welcome, uh, they feel supported, and we provide them with the resources that we need. So, um, you know, a long time ago, someone gave me something, uh, a placard that called me a servant leader. Um, and I still look at myself that way, that I am here not to tell people what to do. I am here to help people make the best of themselves and for kids to make the best of themselves. So, I hope that, that we're building, we're building that professional culture. But we have a lot of work to do. We have to really reestablish and formulate our district safety teams with COVID, those things with people in the, those kind of, you know, they're not as active as they used to be. We have to revise and update our strategic plan. Um, this year, we conducted an equity audit, which highlighted some areas where we can make our experience for our kids more equitable. And we need to build that into our strategic plan to make sure that that happens. Um, obviously, the SIMP feedback. I'm working on some end-of-year surveys for families, kind of a how are we doing, what can we do better? Um, and already planning for next year. We've been discussing scheduling and student placement and all of that, uh, getting ready for that next year. There'll be information going out if teachers are interested in summer work, which they usually are, where they're doing some extra planning to prepare for the next year. So, that will all be going out. So, it's a busy, busy place. But I just felt it appropriate for you to kind of have that kind of overview of some of the things that maybe we don't always talk about here necessarily, because it, it doesn't need to be here. But, um, you know, I welcome your feedback on any of that, and I welcome your questions.
Don't talk about a lot, and especially recently, because we've barely had the opportunity to catch our breath and have any type of a side conversation. It's, it's been nothing but, um, full speed ahead in trying to repair, um, whatever it is that's gone wrong for the past two years. And, and it seems like things only escalated recently. And it's just been a really, just an uncharted, uncharted, um, ride for us. And it's, it's frankly, it's been, uh, a little bit, a little bit miserable. It has, just, just rough going, and at every turn, we were just faced with another challenge. So, it's nice to hear, um, what's been happening behind the scenes. We certainly know that there's been some, you know, continuity, um, when you, when you took over at the helm. And, you know, I, I think we, considering, um, the tumultuous times that we went through the past couple of years, I think, um, I think we had some great leadership between you and, um, and Dr. Handfield. I mean, I just, I really think we made the best of the two years. But then we hit, hit a little bit of a, a roadblock, uh, most recently. So, it's nice to hear that, you know, we continue to, to, to push forward and do its best for the kids behind the scenes while all of this is going on. So, I thank you for that, and I thank you for, um, you bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment through the chair. Um, yeah, it's very awkward tooting your own horn, like, get that. But, um, this was necessary to, to show all of the, you've been a jack of all trades for the past couple of months, and this is, um, just the tip of the iceberg of what you've done. So, um, I wish we had all night, and I could make you go through every single bullet point here. But, um, George wants to get out of here, so.
Problem.
So, um, no, thank you for this, though. It was, it's great. Thank you.
Through the chair, I can tell you that every school I've been in, um, or walked in, in town, people have said such amazing things. I know I've personally had to deal with some stuff where I didn't necessarily get exactly what I wanted, but through it, I learned that, um, everybody got what they needed. And, um, I think that's something that I've seen multiple times. I also have to say that random emails to staff members just out of the blue to say, hey, we know what you're doing, we know you're doing a great job, goes a long way. And I, I like being able to see that. Um, and I just thank you for everything that you've done. And, you know, all, all of this, plus so much more, that's probably, you know, I think just the, the positivity is huge, and, um, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I, I, I know everybody's saying we appreciate it, but it, it made such a difference to have someone who is wholly devoted, not only to the job, but to the district and the people that you work with. And clearly, just the fact that you are still driving with new goals, you know, while you're basically doing two full-time jobs is outstanding. And a, as Meg said, I, I've heard nothing but rave reviews of the way that you've conducted yourself in this position when you were kind of just getting it on the fly. So, thank you so much for dealing with it with, you know, professionalism and compassion and grace, but also intelligence, and I don't really know when you sleep. But we, we definitely are, are, you know, really lucky to have you, so.
I do have a question through the chair. Um, you mentioned the KLE program that we went through. Um, did they give us the next steps for that? I know there were inequities that they found, and we do have work to do. So, I wasn't sure what happened after that, those meetings ended.
Yeah, so we just recently got the final draft report. We had two meetings with them as a stake, um, just like the Central Office folks, Um, to review their preliminary draft. Um, so we recently, my plan is to have the full report on the next agenda for you. Um, and I also then want to have a meeting with the folks that participated to go through that. And then to also bring that to folks that we're going to get together around the strategic plan.
Okay, great.
Because it's, it's all got a kind of, you know, there's those dominoes that take place to get that in. So yes, that's the plan.
All right.
Great, thank you.
And I just want to say thank you. This has been such a rough time with everything's gone on since January and just knowing you're there and we can count on you and the district and the teachers can count on you and the principals. And to have everything keep going the way it was meant to go. It's just been a, a massive relief with other disasters I've seen in the past in Auburn. That didn't happen this time. So it was, it's been great and I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. And, you know, I have to say, you know, it is awkward to talk like this, but I'm going to tell you that there's not one thing here that I did by myself. And I want to be clear about that because our, our teachers, the union, the principals, the everybody, the central office staff, everybody, even today. They were like, can I help with that? Can I do, you know, everyone is just, we just have such a great, a great community. Whether it's here in the schools or in the town of Auburn, um, I haven't run into a place where I haven't received some support, you know? So there's nothing we can do that we can't, we, we have to do it together. Takes a lot of people, again, rowing in that same direction, you know? And then we can make some progress, so.
I know, I've heard even Mandy's mom has been in to help.
So thank you.
With good reason. Thank you for that, um, Dr. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Everything was, was well stated and, you know, I think, I think we're all on the same page with, with our sentiments. And I would just, um, also, you know, piggyback what you said regarding staff. It's just been that way for, since I can remember for the ten years that, that I've been on here. It's just everyone supporting one another and and I always make reference to that kid's first sign. That's really what it's always been about, so. Um, very impressive the way we come together, especially, you know, in times like these.
That's for sure. That's for sure.
So that being said, we will move on, um, if there's nothing else from the committee to, um, appointment of superintendent. So there is no recommended motion, um, as, as it reads there. So again, we continue this conversation. Um, just to, to recap some things, I'm going to go back to, I'm going to go back a couple of years ago. There were a lot of people in town who said that, um, you know, we should open up the, the superintendent, um, hiring to, uh, you know, a larger search and not keep it just within the schools, um, but do some type of a superintendent search. Um, I was against that then. I stand by that decision and, and I stand by it because again, I think considering what we had working against us, we had a great two years and we had great leadership until we didn't have that leadership anymore. And then, uh, again, to reiterate what I said last meeting, when I made that phone call to Dr. Chamberlain, um, she didn't hesitate. Yes, I'll do it. I'll take over. And, um,
It was like, thank God.
Yeah, I was quite relieved because she could have very well said, well, no, why don't we go through, um, M A S C? I'll continue to do my job, um, maintain stability there and, you know, M A, M A S C can send someone in. Well, you know, that's hit or miss. Sometimes you get a real rock star, but what you don't get is someone that you know. You don't get someone that, you know, the staff, the faculty is always going to be willing to work with. So we didn't have to go there. So that being said, here we are, um, broached with the same type of situation. Where a decision has to be made and it has to be made fairly quickly. Most recently, we've been talking about an assistant superintendent. We have an acting, an interim superintendent, and now we don't have an assistant superintendent. Curriculum coordinator because, um, Dr. Chamberlain's been doing both jobs. That can't go on through the summer. We're already late in the hiring season, so we need to figure out that piece of it. That leads us to the next move. We have to figure out what to do about the superintendency. So in my eyes, we've had a pretty decent interview process over the past few months. Um, we've gotten to see, not only the past few months, but even beyond that, what Dr. Chamberlain is capable of. But more so the past couple of months, as one of my, um, colleagues just mentioned, you know, pulling double duty and still getting it done. So, you know, some people would say once again, haven't you learned your lesson? What about a superintendent search? Well, Worcester's going on seven months right now. And I don't know what they're going to end up for a finalist. I know they're at their, their final four stage. But that's seven months of work that's bringing the community together, which is rightfully they did. That's bringing, you know, that's bringing other staff members in. That's bringing everyone to the table, which is the way it really should be done. Unfortunately, I don't think we're in a situation where we have the time to do that. Again, the, it's late in the hiring season. Many of the good administrators, good superintendents have already been swiped. They've already been picked up. If you look at school spring, there's really not much left out there. So, you know, we're in a situation where I think we need to, we need to continue, um, this sort of interview pro- process. But I think we do it more formally and it would be my recommendation to offer Dr. Chamberlain a one-year contract so that we continue, um, to move forward. We continue, um, to keep the stability that we've had over the past few months. And not to shake things up in the district. I just think that's the way we need to go right now. We certainly, well, not we, you certainly can take a look at things a year from now. And you can say, you know what? This isn't what we expected. Or you can say, wow, um, we made the right decision. We made the right decision back in, in late April. You know, it seems like we've only improved. Things have gone, couldn't have gone any better. Or you may say things didn't work out. But I think that's something that we address, um, a year from now. And that's, that's my opinion. And usually I wait until there's a second before we're even allowing any discussion. But just wanted to put that out there because we don't actually have a motion. So I would open it up to any comments.
I think we, we have a great superintendent in the room right now. Um, I think, I, I agree with the one-year contract, but I also think that we can search far and wide. I think Dr. Chamberlain's proven herself. Um, I can't think of anyone else who can take a job on a Monday morning and be like, all right, here we go and do as good of a job. And, um, so I am in full support of that. And I also, I also truly feel that this district deserves consistency, passion, and somebody who loves this town. And we're not going to find that by doing a nationwide search right now.
I, I agree with Meg and with you as well. I, and I don't want any of the, I guess, sense of urgency in terms of time to overshadow your true qualifications for the position. I think you can interview somebody ten, ten different ways. But you're not going to e- ever be able to witness how they work in their actual environment. So we actually have that luxury and you have knocked it out of the park. And I think even if we had nine months to find somebody, it would be a poor choice to not move forward in this. So if you want a motion or a second, I'm happy to make that.
Well, I'll, I'll continue to, um, let people make comments and I just want to say that, you know, I, I would, I would agree with you a hundred percent. You know, I'm not saying that Dr. Chamberlain, um, is not going to do a great job, but I just figured that we talked so much about that before. Um, this section that I didn't need to reiterate that. But I also wanted to, um, which I typically don't do. I, I did kind of want to justify my decision and justify my comments. And that's why I was talking about the superintendent process and how unstable that can be and how long it can take and that type of thing. But, but really it's not like we're in a jam and, you know, we're, we're kind of throwing caution at the wind here. It's not, that's not the case whatsoever.
Well, in my opinion, Dr. Chamberlain is the way we should go. I taught in Auburn for forty-one years. I saw many superintendents come and go. And the one thing Dr. Chamberlain has is she, she loves this district. She gets along with everyone. I've seen people come in that want to be a good superintendent and it's almost a hell what the district needs. They want to do things that make them look good. And it, there's fights with the teachers, there's almost strikes, there's all kinds of problems. Because it isn't about Auburn. It's about some political motive to make someone look great. I've seen them come, I've seen them go. It isn't what Auburn needs at any point in time. I think we're lucky to have someone from our district that cares this much and has the experience and the qualifications to do the job. And she's got my vote, two hundred percent.
Yeah, through the chair, I agree with Gail. Um, you know, from faculty to, are you crying? Don't make me cry. I cry when I see people cry. From, um, faculty, from faculty to parents in the district, people reaching out to me. I didn't even have to find people. They came to me and said, like, you are crazy if you let that woman go. Um, other administrators in this district have said, you are crazy if you let her go. Um, one of them even said, you, why go out and look for a shooter when you have Larry Bird sitting on the bench? So. That would be Mr. Dustow. It's like, okay, I don't do basketball, but whatever. Um, but yeah, it's just, you know, you've really, you've done a great job. You stepped up to the plate. Um, I, I shudder at the thought of bringing M A S C in here. Um, you know, I lived through the Bay Path search with George, you know, I heard, heard about stuff like that. And it's just a tedious process. There's school visits that need to happen. There's parents that need to get involved, which is fine. And I'm totally on board with that, but it's more like, just the, it could take a year. There are some towns that have taken a couple of years to find the right person. Um, and we just, we are healing from a pandemic and just healing from the start of this new year still. And I, consistency is key. I think, um, this is a golden opportunity, in my opinion, so.
And through the chair, just for one more time, the, the, I would say the most common feedback that I've gotten is that there has been a sense of calm with how you've led.
Yes.
I think we've all heard that and I think that right now you're talking about the healing. I, I think that is one hundred percent what we need. But people notice that immediately. So thank you for that.
And the fact you talked about like a nationwide search and visiting schools and everything. I've seen Dr. Chamberlain in these schools and some kids in middle school and fifth grade are like, I know her, like, and you know every single one of their names. Which I get yelled at by children daily that I don't remember their names. So that's huge, that just knowing the district and loving the district as much as you do.
And I will just.
Admit I'm not as good with adults, so sorry. Well, it's all those masks we had to wear.
Yeah, we talk about the search and we, and we talk about what, what goes into it. And, you know, as Meg said, visiting the schools and, and sometimes people will tell you exactly what you want to hear. And Jesse brought up some, you know, recent happenings, you know, around, um, you know, I, I won't get too specific. But you can get superintendents that come in and just turn things completely upside down to where the staff is uncomfortable. Which trickles down to the students, even if you're trying to be as professional as you possibly can. You just get people that can come in and really shake things up. And most of the time it's because of what Gail said. They're trying to shine, they're trying to make themselves look better, they're trying to save a dollar, they're trying to, you know, the better that they can make the budget look. The more money they can ask for come contract time. And then I will just fi- um, finish with, you know, people talk about, you know, losing Dr. Chamberlain or you have someone on the bench that can get the job done. Well, she wasn't going to leave no matter what. Because, you know, I ran some different scenarios by her and have been running scenarios by her for months now. And it always came back to, I'm not going anywhere, no matter what, I'm just not leaving. So, you know, that's what it comes down to and that.
That's what it comes down to, totally. Yes, one hundred percent.
Yeah.
So can we have a motion to?
Yeah, well, that's my job to ask for it, but yeah, if you want to. It's not even cold yet. I guess it's my last meeting, but.
You're better with the words, you do it.
I would entertain a motion to offer Dr. Chamberlain a contract which we will negotiate sometime after this evening.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Favor?
Congratulations.
Welcome to the, oh, you're already in.
I can't thank you all enough. And through, since the middle of January, the support I've received from all of you has been unbelievable. Um, but the support and the, I mean, parents, kids, teachers, principals, central office, secretaries, custodians, they all want to talk, you know? I, I just can't tell you that when I came to Auburn, I wasn't sure I was a fit at Bryn Mawr School. And the staff at Bryn Mawr School changed me as a leader. And brought me into the Auburn fold in a way that I never expected. Um, and again, that's part of the reason I, I, I don't want to go anywhere else. There's nowhere else I, I want to be. Um, but it's because of the teamwork and it's because of the connections. And it's because that people here really do believe that kids come first, you know? And that's what, as educators, that's all we want. We have to remember, kids come first. So I can't express enough my honor, quite frankly, at your confidence in, in me and your kind words. And I, I just appreciate it so, so much and, you know, I just, I have to say, I, I have to thank my family. Because through all of this, when I was like, oh, boy. They insisted I could do it, you know, and you know, sometimes need that little boost. So I appreciate them and I love them very much. Um, and all I know is I'm going to work as hard as I can possibly work to make you all proud.
Oh, you've already proven that, so.
You don't know what to do with yourself when you have an assistant.
I'm ready for that.
Yes.
I'm ready for some help. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Those comments, very nice. And we now move on to unfinished business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening we have some members from the Green Dome Committee who are going to present a little bit of an update on what they've been working on with the dome. You'll have to come up to the podium if you would and introduce yourself.
I want my Auburn blue tonight.
Yeah, Steve Boudin.
Jackie Walsh.
Judy Turkot.
Christine Miller.
All graduates of nineteen sixty-six from Auburn High.
Go Dandies. So yeah, we just want to, I think, uh, you have a packet of information that was provided. But I wanted to give you kind of a quick update in terms of where we started and where we are, you know, today. We started, uh, with the creation of the, uh, Green Dome Preservation Committee, you know, thanks particularly to, you know, to the members up here. I was kind of jumped in, uh, about halfway through and I said, you know, this, this is fun. So it all started with the initial formation of the committee. We knew we had to do through, uh, talking to the town. We knew we had to go through, you know, various processes in order to, you know, do this quote the right way. So the first thing we did, we had, uh, hired an inspector to come out and inspect the green dome. Uh, not surprisingly, we found, you know, lead paint, you know, as part of the, uh, you know, the painting. Not surprising since the high school was built nineteen thirty-five. And so once we found that out, then we had to, you know, create, uh, an option of, uh, you know, how are we going to go about, you know, getting this resolved. First thing we did, we had a meeting with the conservation, you know, commission. They're very thankful that we went up in front of them and discussed what we wanted to do, how we wanted to do it. And we got a tentative approval from them until we hire a contractor. Once we hire a contractor to do the actual, uh, you know, taking, removing the paint and doing all the containment and all the things that are necessary from a, you know, process standpoint. We'll, uh, we'll, we'll work on that. Uh, they've been actively, you know, fundraising, you know, for quite a while now. Uh, we're actually have a, a member of the Auburn, you know, historical.
We're working with the Auburn Historical Society and the museum. And they are holding the money for us, being a nonprofit. And we've, to this day, on our own, have raised over six thousand dollars since July of last year. Um, we did get a fifteen hundred dollar, um, grant from the Pappas Foundation. And there still is, what, fourteen hundred dollars?
In the town.
And that the town is holding from the last, um, time that this was attempted to do, which was in twenty twenty seventeen, I think it was.
Yeah, and just to, oh, go ahead. Yeah, just to kind of follow up because everybody knows, you know, in nineteen thirty-five was the first, you know, Auburn high school. And we really look at it as really historical, you know, part of the town. And when the new, you know, school, uh, high school was built in two thousand and seven, I removed the dome. Thank God it wasn't, you know, demolished with the rest of the school. It kind of was like an orphan for a few years, going there and there. And now we're, we're very happy to see we have a formal, you know, resting place for the, for the green dome right behind the outfield at, uh, you know, at the high school. So again, what we want to do is, is just, you know, with your approval, you know, and if you have any questions about what we're going to be doing, how we're going to do it. Uh, you know, be happy to take questions. But again, right now we're in the process of, you know, trying to, you know, find a contractor to do the work. And once, again, once we do that, then, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll kind of go from there, so.
And, and raise money.
And raise money.
Yeah, we've, we have a lot of fundraisers, um, on tap that we hope to continue through the summertime. And, um, we do realize that once this project is completed, um, there's going to have to be money to continue in perpetuity because somebody's going to have to maintain the structure.
We hope to set up a, we hope to set up funding for the maintenance afterwards, also ongoing funding.
And we would like to see the school, um, take an interest in what's going on, um, being, um, an historical structure. We were all a little bit aghast to find out that a lot of the students in school have no idea what that thing is that's sitting under poverty. And, um, um, we, um, Chris is a school teacher. We've already said that we would go before, you know, the history department or whatever. And, um, we hope we can, we're right now in the process of getting some posters made and, um, using them for a fundraiser as well. But hopefully, maybe a poster can go up in the school building so that, um, maybe the students might ask about it take some interest in, in the, in the, because after all, it's gonna be them that will be taking care of it after us.
The, the poster is very beautiful. I've seen it. There's a picture of the Green Dome in the middle of old high school with fireworks over it. There's different pictures of the domes from different years of the school's existence. So, we hope to sell those. And it, it's very impressive looking.
It is. It, it's a very nice, it's a, Bay Path, actually, has been doing the work for us.
And unfortunately, over the last fifteen years, you can see there's been a lot of deterioration of the dome. And we don't act now. We're afraid that it's gonna, you know, crumble into nothing. It would be a shame to lose something of that historical value, you know, to the town.
Well, and with all the beautification that's been going on at Drury Square, I mean, we don't want to leave a dome there, a structure there that's falling apart with everything else that they're, you know, trying to, um, to beautify, um, in that area. And, and we're very glad to see that there have been pathways, um, to the dome with the memorial, um, the war memorial kind of in the same area. So, we're, we're very pleased with where the dome is, because that's where it is. We're not asking, you know, the school department for any permission as far as putting it there. It was approved in two thousand nine for it to go there, and just nothing's been done with it, and obviously is.
And we, we're not asking for money from the town or whatever. It's not gonna talk to, cost the taxpayers any money. It's just, we're trying to fund it as best we can. Uh, we thought we had something could go in, but it kind of fell through the.
As, as a former history teacher, I was impressed with the historical significance of the Green Dome. Cause, you know, a lot of people from that town have said, oh, it's just you being sentimental and everything. But it was in fact part of the New Deal under Franklin Roosevelt, the Public Works Administration. And the architect, as you can read in your packets, was very famous. He won several architectural awards for other buildings in the state. And, and that alone, I think, um, is worthy of saving.
And since it's on school property, felt it appropriate to come in, you know, and kind of explain what we're doing, why we're doing it, and, you know, what the process involved is.
Yeah, and certainly moving forward, I know we had met, Mr. Fahy and I had met, um, with Ms. Turcot, and we've met with the town as well. Um, and, you know, we're here to support you, and I think there are avenues that we could share this information at the high school. And I know Mr. Fahy was pulled in just to make sure that things that, that were planning to be done were done in the right way. But I do think there's an avenue there, whether it's, you know, there are several departments, I can think, that might, it might make some sense to kind of tap that interest. So, I think we can certainly talk about that further.
The kids would be very interested, especially when we explain the history of it. One of the reasons we thought it was appropriate to leave it where it is is because the war memorial is there. And most of those, if not all of those people on that list, went through Auburn High School. I know my father's first cousin, Richard Miller, is on there. And he was, he went to Auburn High many, many years ago. He was killed in Iwo Jima. And so, this has kind of a personal significance for me.
I think it does for all of us. Yeah, all of our, my parents graduated from Auburn High School. And our kids, grandkids.
Well, even on the call in the yearbook, there's always a picture of the Green Dome. You know, on the front, we had a, a journal or a. Yeah, a magazine. We call it the Green Dome Magazine. So, that was always been a part of the, you know, the history of the high school.
So, it sounds like you've made some good progress as far as fundraising goes, so that's great.
Any comments, questions?
Up through the chair, I think it's a great suggestion to try to work it into the curriculum in some way. Even it's just a special feature. I know there's an architect, an architecture class, which that, the fact that it's, you know, was built by a significant architect.
October, I spoke to Dan DeLonge. Um, and he was gonna let us come in to talk to the history classes, but then the holidays came and everything else, and so we kind of got pushed by the wayside.
Along with COVID. It was rough last year, which we didn't expect, you know, so.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, as I said, I think the history classes should know something about the history of the high school. And also, including the town of Auburn as well. I mean, when I was in high school, way back when, um, we had to study state and local history. I don't know if that's part of the curriculum now, but I think it should be.
Thank you for that, that presentation, and I'm glad things are going well. I know it's been a, a, a tough road for, for all of you who are on board. Um, there certainly are, uh, we have our share of naysayers, and, and I think it's great that you're protecting history and, and you're finding funding mechanisms to get that done. So, I appreciate your efforts and.
I hope when it's all done, there'll be a plaque explaining the history of it and.
Yeah, we've, we've had contributions from businesses around town. Webster Credit Union, Harley Davidson, Sheldon's Harley Davidson. Webster Credit Union gave us two hundred dollars. And the class of seventy-one, which was my sister's class, gave five hundred.
And we just got a commitment just this week from Shaw's. So, even, even the corporation, you know, the big corporations, they, they want to support local community.
Good. That's great.
So, one thing we don't lack as enthusiasts.
Another suggestion, sorry, to, um, butt in again. But, um, maybe create some kind of fundraiser that would include the younger grades. I know some of the schools do like, um, community projects and stuff. So, you know, maybe they could do a little, um.
Paint your green dome.
We will, we will, for the farmers market and.
Oh, good. That's what I was gonna suggest.
To like the Fourth of July, set up a table and where people can make donations.
I don't know if any of you have noticed the buckets that we have all around town. We've got little buckets that, um, a friend has made a green dome. So, um, we've placed them in different businesses around town. So, you know, after, pick them up after a couple of weeks. Some buckets have ten dollars, some have fifty bucks. So, um, that's another thing I was thinking of, that, when you say the kids, you know? It doesn't have to be a, a big, huge, um, um, situation. As long as, you know, the awareness is out there. You know, I think a lot of people have noticed these buckets when they've gone to the cleaners or to the fish store or wherever, you know, we've placed them. We've got about what? How many buckets would you say we have? I would say there's probably twenty to twenty-five. Yeah, yeah. So, well, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And don't feel obligated to stay. It's, nothing exciting is gonna happen from here on out.
Totally fine, totally fine. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You. Have a nice evening.
Have a great night. Familiar.
Good luck.
Judy.
Yeah, in a good way?
Oh, yeah. She ran the schools.
All right, nice presentation. We now move on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Historically, the school committee will have a meeting prior to the town meeting. Uh, but given how our meetings have fallen, we're having a meeting this week. Town meeting is next week. Um, I'm not necessarily sure that we need to have another school committee meeting prior to the town meeting. But I leave it to you if you feel there might be some other need for that.
No, I think if something, if something comes up, um, you could always reach out to us, um, a couple of days in advance. And we could get that scheduled. No one ever shows up for that one. And usually, we don't have a whole lot to go over, but if there is something. The only thing I can, no, I, I think we're good. Yep.
Now, last couple of meetings, they wouldn't let us in the meeting room. We were stuck in the presentation room all by ourselves.
Well, not, but now they're having the, the plays and everything there, so I think we'll be able to.
So.
The auditorium.
So, you think the table will be there for us and?
Yeah, I would imagine it would be.
Through the chair, they are, they're gonna be setting up tables in the front for the school committee, Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee in the front. And there'll be people up on the stage, so, so there will be seating for you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Now, is this meeting taking place earlier than it used to? Because there was something about the time that.
I think it's usually the tenth. I think it's usually the next week.
No, 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 no. The time of the meeting.
Oh, six o'clock, yes.
Didn't we like, used to go for seven? So, this is out of my league, cause I haven't.
It may be because there, there may be something controversial, um, on the, um, docket. And I think there is something regarding animals. I could be wrong on that. But I think, I think that one could be. A long one.
Wasn't that the last meeting with the animals?
I think it's up again. I'm not sure exactly. I didn't read all the way through it, but. I did get some.
About tiny houses.
I, I'm not going there, but I'm just telling you, that's probably why they're making it earlier, because we have been known to, um, stay there until ten thirty at night.
So, it is earlier. It is starting earlier?
Yeah, I think it used to start at seven, but you're right. It's earlier this year.
So, Dr. Chamberlain, are you presenting? No, so, uh, we met with the town, um, just this week. And, um, Mrs. Jacobson, Town Manager Jacobson, is not doing her presentation. She's recording something to send to town meeting members. I did that as well today, that she's, that, um, the town hall is gonna send out to the town meeting members so that they have the presentation. Um, but it seemed to be the consensus by a lot of the town meeting members that the meeting seemed a lot shorter when there weren't a lot of presentations. And so, that kind of is something good, I guess, that came out of COVID, that they're gonna do it that way. There will be a couple of presentations around specific items that could be controversial. Um, but other than that, they're not going to do any, so. So, you're not gonna be there or? No, I'm going to be there in case there are any questions on any of the articles that are presented. Um, but there won't be that budget presentation that evening. It'll be sent out prior to.
So, I'd entertain a motion to not meet the day of town meeting or before town meeting.
Make that motion.
And I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. And do we have anything under teaching and learning?
Uh, I decided that the students that we had talked about and had this evening could suffice as our teaching and learning report.
I think that's.
And what about everyone's favorite, um, business and financial? We do, awesome. Just as things were dying down a little bit.
So exciting, money. Good evening, everyone. So, in your packet, I've included a copy of the electric supplier agreement as the current electricity supplier contract with Constellation New Energy for both the school department and the town is coming to an end in May of twenty twenty-two, just around the corner. Uh, the school department, once again, would like to collaborate on a contract with the town for electrical supply and enter into a six-month contract with Mid-American for a fixed cost of twelve, well, zero point one two three eight three, so actually about a little twelve, over twelve cents. In the meantime, both town and school will work with a consultant from Freedom Energy in an attempt to find better pricing for a longer period of time. In addition, the town will be looking for the approval at the May Annual Town Meeting to have the option of entering into an electrical supplier contract for more than three years, which may allow for an option of better pricing. Um, right now, the market for electrical, electricity and national gas is, is all over the place. And, um, we looked at, we solicited quotes, um, and saw that the pricing, this was actually a good pricing for the six months that we're entering into. And what we plan to do is work with the consultant and monitor it for the next six months. And as soon as we see it come into a good level, that we would jump on that and sign that day. Because we're looking at, as, our numbers as high as fifteen and sixteen cents. So, um, and the last contract we had made, two, two thousand nineteen through May, just this May, we had point nine six, point zero nine six nine. So, this is a considerable jump for us as well. So, but, um, yeah, this was the, the least of, of the two evils, I guess. So, we went for the six month, and hopefully, we're thinking that by locking in maybe like a forty-three month contract or something like more in the fifty-month contracts, we might be able to get a more level, um, pricing or something similar to the twelve cents. We're just, we really didn't want to get into the fifteen or sixteen cents. So, um, I'd look to just get, um, your acceptance.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the six-month electricity supplier agreement with Mid-American for a fixed cost of point one two three eight three cent.
Kilowatt hour.
For a kilowatt hour, while continuing to work with Freedom Energy to procure better pricing for the long term.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
No, seems good.
All in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you. Mr. Fahy and I, thank you for that. So, in your packet, I've also provided a year-to-date budget report dated April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, for your review, along with a listing of budget transfers dated April nineteenth as well, between the same series for your information, along with a listing of transfers between different series, for which I'd like your approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated April nineteen, twenty twenty-two, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Thank you very much. And as a closing, just a reminder that bus applications are due on or before June first, twenty twenty-two. Currently, we have about seven hundred and sixty-two applications, which is a little less than half. So, we're hoping, we have, we're coming May, so it'll be one month left. Um, so it's about half of our normal registrations. Um, we'll be sending out reminders to families through ZipSlip. And the good thing about the ZipSlip program is that we can see the families that maybe haven't responded or come in with registrations so we can target those families specifically if they've registered last year and haven't done so this year, so. But if there's any questions, um, they can feel free to reach out to myself or Mandy Williams at the central office, and we'd be happy to answer any questions, so.
And there's still, uh, pro wa- prorated fee or something for people on free lunch or something like that? Or do they all pay the same?
For free and reduced lunch, they don't, they don't pay.
Oh, they don't pay at all?
The only people that pay are the people that are under the two-mile mark through K through s- six. Um, seven through twelve pay, um, regardless, unless they're on free and reduced lunch.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, but, um, yeah, so we'll hopefully be getting more and more applications. We usually get busy right towards the first part, well, right before June first, so, but thank you. And that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent, as always. Thank you. Is there any, anything else?
The only other thing I will ask the committee to do before we leave, and I know we do have to go into executive session, but we do have some posters in our hallway that were provided to us from the three elementary schools, um, that came out of some of the work for, um, the Unified Games that are going to be coming. There were some activities given. So, posters have been narrowed down. We have a few that we'd like you to each vote on for one from each school.
I heard a rumor about this.
So, just to put that out there, that, you know, Unified Games will be coming at the end of June, and it's going to be a remarkable event at Auburn High School. So, um, thanks to Mr. Luca and her entire team of folks that are working on this to pull this off. But we look forward to another event, so we'll be looking for another vote on the way down the hallway, so.
That's great. And do we have two school committee candidates in the house? I know we have, um, Mrs. Brooke Wren and Mr. Raphael. Is that how you say it? Raphael. Well, we're very excited that you're running. I think you're gonna do, um, really well at the election, at the polls. No, seriously, though, I'm, I'm confident, um, to see, you know, a couple of individuals. I've heard great things. Um, Brooke, I've met you a few times, but certainly I've heard great things about both of you. And, you know, I feel really confident in, in, in leaving and having, um, two of you who are so, so qualified to, to sort of take over the reins here a little bit. And, and you're gonna be working with, you know, a, a, a great, um, bunch of people here. Just want to let you know that. And so, thank you for throwing your hat in the ring and putting yourself out there. There's nothing easy about it. It can be time-consuming. There can be some headaches involved, but I fully support both of you, and I'll, I'll see you at the polls.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I just want to add, we are losing our chair, Mr. Scobie, and Mrs. Kaufman here. Um, and what, eight years for you and ten for you, and that's quite an accomplishment. So, I just personally thank you guys for your hard work. My ugly cry, because I have a hard time with change, but, um, I wish you guys both luck. You know where we are, if you want to come visit.
Well, I'll just be in the audience.
I know where you live. Actually, I know where you live, too.
Appreciate those comments. It's been an honor, so, uh, you know, I would do it again in a heartbeat, not right away, but
And Dottie, good luck with your family.
Thank you, thank you. Time to focus on on my old people, so. And thank you, yeah, it's been quite a ride.
If I can say, just on behalf of the kids and the staff, you know, you guys make it look easy. There's nothing easy about the work that you all do on this committee, and, um, we thank you. You know, we thank you for the support and the collaboration, so you'll be missed, but it's nice to have folks that step into the ring because it takes a lot, so we appreciate that, so.
I think we're really in 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 great shape. I really do.
Yeah, let's not scare them off.
I mean, it's always.
Told them how awesome it is.
It's always great. There's never, there are never gonna be any naysayers, no name-calling, nothing. It's great. Hundred percent positive.
All sunshine.
Yeah, just close down your Facebook page and turn off your email and you'll be fine.
Like we're gonna do tonight. And with that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Uh, I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the bargaining position with non-union personnel that could be compromised if discussed in open session. We will not return to open session.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Yep.
Soloway?
Yes.
Sarrington?
Yes.
Scottlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Good night, everyone.